You ain't gonna be able to make the first responders. I had to change the date. It's the third, it's gonna be.
Barry. You guys aren't gonna see me? I'm surprised.
No, I think it's. She's the PTO.
If I was somewhere else.
And so I just wanna make sure.
I am twenty here physically. As opposed to being there.
Hey, John.
Good morning, Barry.
I'm going to move myself show here.
Okay. I didn't know. Thank you, sir. How kind of you.
Hello, I'm Ed. Barry Connolly. Hey, nice to meet ya.
Nice to meet you, buddy. How we doing? Can I get this building built?
Oh, yeah. I got a plan.
Well, that's good. That's good.
I know, because we've evolved for dates.
Evolved what?
We've evolved for dates.
So. He asked me this. Yesterday, the buildings went down and pulled permits, am I right?
They were supposed, they were supposed to, there was a bit of a hang up for information, so they may not have made it yesterday. But they'll be there today. Yeah, it'll be there today.
We gotta get that done. There's a lot line that, I don't know enough about it, but were you supposed to do something with a lot?
I'm working, well, I'm working on a plan, so we'll know whether it's over or not.
That's what, yeah, okay, good.
I think you're talking about the amount of land we need.
That's right.
Okay, yeah, okay, 'cause there's another piece that we're working on.
Well, the other.
John's videotape, John's taping, yeah. No, that's why we kept it that way, so that way.
Yeah, why, oh, do you wanna go? Well, I got a camera over there.
We just wanted to feel comfortable, like.
I got a camera over there.
Wait, you're gonna have their backs to, you're gonna have their backs to people?
I don't want my back to, you know, I'm an Irish guy, I don't put my back to anything.
I know.
I go to a restaurant and I sit.
I get nervous about that. You must be nervous about having your back to someone. She's like, yeah.
I'll sit wherever I want, as long as it's up to ask the bird, as long as I'm at the table. I didn't hear that.
He said you're a wonderful fellow.
Yeah, right.
So, you know, I think we'll, yeah.
Okay.
Hi, Hunter.
Perfect, perfect, perfect. Because he didn't have a date yet, and he said, hey, Bert, we can meet like next week. Swing your end this week, he's gonna come and be with us.
I gotta be careful, because my daughter is getting married first week in July. And I'm, I'm the officiant, so I gotta make sure, oh, yeah, I'm marrying my own daughter. I didn't marry her, I officiated.
Married her up.
But he had said.
I think the front row, front row was just.
Let me see. Because he had given two dates, one of them was the, like, the fourth, but it wasn't a date that would work with.
Yeah.
Because, because it was always like the fifth or something like that, but he also gave.
Yeah, I won't be back in town until probably.
This was next week.
Oh, I'll be around.
It's Wednesday.
Yeah, it was Wednesday, Wednesday, June twenty eighth at ten a.m., is when he can meet with us. Or July fifth, we said yes, so that was it. We're just waiting for the town to respond.
What are we meeting about, just the?
This is, this is, um, oh, this is a CTE grant.
Yeah.
And what needs to be done, and he says, it doesn't, nothing needs to be held up right now. No, it's like, he doesn't need a plan, he doesn't need any of that, he just wants. You know, Eric from the, from the state.
Okay.
And then, well, so.
You and Hunter are communicating quite a bit, I understand, yeah, so good.
So we just need someone to, we just need Hunter to respond to him saying that the G twenty, the ten minute. Yes, I'm good, thank you.
Well, it looks like they have an arms. Well, they had, they posted.
Yes, and that's why we need this recent one, yes.
My last, just they took retirement.
Oh, my gosh, somebody, somebody took my ends.
Really? I've had three and a half years, yeah. That's what happens with the. Yeah, I know, but that, what happens to me is, like, with something. They weren't, you know, they weren't taking anything else for, having anything else for taxes? So, you know, this amount of money taken out of.
Yeah. He's gonna. You all owe you finally?
No, I haven't heard something for sure.
I say, but you're going to kind of like, I'm, because I am out of here at eight thirty, I mean, no later than nine thirty. I'm done at nine thirty, so.
Yes. How do you know?
Is there anybody here?
Yeah.
Well, you wanna make sure you get my best side?
I think that's what they were trying to do.
Be the back of my head.
Yeah.
That's what they were trying to do.
Yeah, you should get your. And I never wanna be in the same shop.
I would happily separate into a split.
You can.
I, I told you, I gotta, I gotta.
Don't do it again. Geez, yes, this is a comfortable chair, I'm sitting.
That way it looks, it doesn't look like we're separated.
Yeah.
Like this.
Barry, I wouldn't hit you, I can hurt you more with words. Something you saw. I was, I was.
See, words are nothing without action.
State rest law, and I took the class lessons for a year and a half, so I.
You keep them under the.
Hey, I heard. If a picture's worth a thousand words, Bert, you still have more words.
He's been waiting to use that a long time.
He's that, so you know, that's ninety-four.
Yeah. I feel really. You're fine. No. Yeah, yeah. You guess that match the timer?
It's, it's eight oh one, y'all ready to get started?
Yep.
So, appreciate y'all coming over and having this discussion with us to figure out how to move forward and execute this as seamlessly as possible from my perspective. So, I'd like to turn it over to y'all, really, as the less.
I'm not gonna function, because I really, in my years, I've had vice principals, and I really want them to feel a part of this, so I'm turning it over to Jim.
I can, I can really live.
Yeah, okay, okay.
I can hear the, no pun intended, the bus backing over me? No, Steve, thank you very much, and as part of our last meeting, I was really wanting to have this meeting and many others like it prior to today, but here we are today with. Because we want to comply with the wishes of the voter, but in order to do that, we need to figure out exactly the needs so that we can get the lease written. Obviously, the, as the warrant had it, that there was gonna be, you know, the ninety-nine year lease for the dollar, and then the use of the facilities, so beyond that, there are a few other things that we wanna memorialize and get into that lease, so that board sitting here ten, fifteen, ninety-nine years from now will understand exactly, you know, what was done, what needs to be done, and how we can best have that memorialized, so.
I need to interrupt, I can, you now have quorum, I'm gonna post a meeting for you.
Well, can we sit, he can't sit in here and still in court?
Well, there's three of you here, which is a quorum, and that's the, that's the statutory.
Keith went out of his way to be here.
Now, Bert, I posted that they, that they were gonna be here, is that still okay, that they can?
Yes.
We have.
Because it is posted at, it is posted at, we sent it to town hall.
You've been at meetings where you've had three of them before.
We always post, I always, if I know there's gonna be any, I always post.
No, I mean, I don't think you post, I mean, you've been at our meetings.
Right, like, as, as citizens.
You just let it go.
Yeah.
He's here as a citizen.
Okay, so we're gonna say that's a dual posting?
It is, it says it in the posting. I did post it that it was, they were gonna be here, and it is posted at City Hall, it's posted here, it's posted everywhere, so. Yeah, so I think we're good.
Yes, sir.
I, I do wanna, you know, I'm not stepping out of order here, I do wanna make one thing clear. Boy, what a fail, Bert, you have us wondering everything. And that is.
Yes, please, please, yeah.
Yeah, if you want, happy.
Yeah.
I've spent a lot of time with, I've talked to you, I've spent a lot of time with this process. We in fact already have a lease that was voted on by the people, okay? Today, we need to talk about how, how do you codify that, in, in a way, so what was voted by the people? Stance, okay? And we're not gonna argue that at all anymore, that's it, you know, we wanna put that behind us, we wanna move forward, we got plenty of things, both groups, to, to deal with, so I wanna make that clear, that, you know, that's where this board is right now, is, you know, get a lease, let's codify it and get it done, move on.
So, that was the point that I was getting to make, was that, to memorialize that in a way that we have a way that we can proceed correctly, for the best interest of, of everybody. So, I guess it's just, if we have, I would assume that it would be the town writing the lease as it's our property, so the town needs to understand, maybe if you give us our bullet points of things that you wanna have included in that lease so that we can talk about it, and get that lease in a draft format for you guys to take a look at. So, I'll turn it back over to you, give me, give us the bullet points of what you'd like to have in that lease, so that we can, obviously including what was in the warrant, but give me the bullet points of what we wanna have in there, and how we wanna have that worded, so that we can get that, as Barry said, codified and, and done and moving on. I don't, I don't see why, you know, we can't get those points out here relatively quickly, and we can get at least a draft format to you within, you know, normal attorney working time, whatever.
I'm gonna start playing golf at eleven, so.
So.
It should be good.
I hope you, too, I'm gonna toss the ball back in your court, the lessor in this case, I believe, is you. I'm not sure that you have a statutory right to be a lessor in this situation, but I do agree that we have to have an agreement between us on what the conditions are of our mating, and that being said, you're in that position, so I would ask you, as the lessor, to tell us, the lessie, what are the things that you want to see in, in the lease? I've, I've never gone to, into a lease situation where I could determine what the lessor is gonna do. So, what is it that you would like to see us do?
I'd like you to tell me the things that you'd like to have, instead of me telling you what I want you to have. Because you, I would like you to tell me the things that you think are important, that you need to have, because I suspect there are some things, the finer points, from the warrant article, that's not covered, that I think you wanna have covered, the things that I've heard you and the rest of the board talk about, some things that you would like to do as a, you know, corrective measures of the situation. So, if you tell me what you want those things to be, I can make sure that they get included. That was my point, so it's not me dictating to you, because we've tried this once before, and we have a disagreement about what I think you ought to have, and what you think you ought to have, so we're beyond that now, I, I want to comply, we want to comply with the warrant, at the same time, make sure that we cover the bases that you wanna have covered. So, if you just tell me what those are, we can start there and, and build on that, and have something that we all like at the end.
Okay, then I'll, then I'll do it in the form of a question. Can we put a concrete floor in that building at our expense?
Of course you can, yeah.
Can we disconnect from your electrical and go to our electric?
Yes, these are, these are the finer points that I'm talking about, the, give up.
Then I'm getting.
Yeah.
Maintenance, would you, in your lease, want us to do renovations, or you to do renovations to the exterior of the building?
Well.
Including roof walls?
So, that is one of the points that I have of concern, that how do we, because it is one contiguous roof, right? We're not gonna replace, you know, our roof without doing your section of the roof either, so.
Okay, so would you accept on the roof that you have a thousand square feet of roof? We have one hundred of it, therefore, we pay ten percent of the roofing cost on a totally roof job. On a repair job that was done to our portion, what portion would you, what, what costs would you allow in that situation?
Exactly, so if there's, if there's, if there's maintenance cost to the structure, right? It's our structure, we need to maintain that structure, so that cost will be borne proportionally based on the area or the amount of, so if, you know.
I would be.
All the bricks get repointed, right?
I wouldn't be opposed to, yeah, because I don't know what the condition of the roof of the building is.
In ninety-nine years, it's gonna get replaced.
Yeah, but I think because it is town property, if I was renting an apartment and needed a new roof, the landlord had to pay for the roof, not me, so I think the town, if it gets to the point where that building's gonna need a new roof, that'll be a town expense, I don't think the school board should pay for it.
I get that, but in this situation where it is a town property that we are leasing out, in this situation where this, the lease is a dollar, in normal leases, there are, the lease covers the maintenance, and the future maintenance, and things of that sort, in this situation, that is not there.
Good point.
So, we don't have any way of, any mechanism of building up a capital reserve, or having money set aside as you would receive monies in a normal lease, so in this situation, anything that we do that would be structural to the betterment of that building, needs to be borne by both parties, and borne by both parties in a, obviously, a correct percentage, if, you know, if they've got ten percent of the building as per, when it out, and we've got ninety, well, then obviously, ten percent of that bill is theirs.
Sounds fair, Rick.
So, that's, that's the point, and, you know, the final point of how that is actually worded and written, and I guess we could determine exactly what percentage of that building those two bays are, by floor area, so we could figure out exactly what that percentage is today, I don't know what that is, so we can get that determined, and I guess I would word it as the percentage of the structure. So, if that structure is, you know, ten thousand square feet, and a thousand of the jaws, there's a ten percent. So, all the, the bays are theirs, the outside, the outside of the area, I, I would agree with Keith, might be our responsibility. You know.
But in my. I have an alarm to make paint their side of the building, paint, and ours is chaperones, you know, with that process, so.
One of the factors that I. That's confusing factor, that I, that I'd like to see is, in any material structural changes to the building, or, you know, additions to the building, one, it's, it's gonna go through the, the building permitting process, the lease or ought to be at least agreeing to the substantive changes, so that, as Barry pointed out, that this, you know, we don't have a yellow half of the building and a, you know, whatever.
You know.
So.
I didn't go through each.
One concern, I'm, I'm personally okay with paying our portion of whatever costs are incurred for structural maintenance of the building, one concern I have is, even if we have a small proportion of that, is the financial cost of the district, and if something catastrophic were to happen, let's say, to the structure that wasn't built into our budget, and it's not easy for us, we can't dip into our capital reserve funds without going and having a meeting of the town to be able to get those monies, so that would be, my concern is, could we have that cushion in in case something were to come up?
Yeah, I would prefer that, that the, that the maintenance cost would be, like, built in, like, in an annual amount.
Right.
Like, like has been in the past, the fifty-eight hundred dollars every year, that'd be a fixed amount that we just contribute every year, and then you set up a capital reserve or whatever on your side that meets your needs, so that you, there's only one vote needed to appropriate funds for repairs, because that's on your side, and, and you don't want it hung up because we can't get a vote passed on the school district side to pay for our share of it.
Are you talking catastrophic things, I mean.
Still would be covered by.
We're not gonna, I mean, I think we've already talked about the fact, if you're gonna put a cement floor in there, you know, you're gonna bear the cost of that.
John's talking about, like, the cost of a roof, if you guys decide to do a roof and it's not in our budget.
Do you wanna weigh it, Russ?
Well, the roof is not an immediate concern.
I know, it just was readout for the last couple of years. In ninety-nine years, it's gonna.
I, I caution you about making a commitment to ninety-nine years to that specific building,
because that building is already fifty years old or something, and ninety-nine years, there's a good chance that building won't be there.
That's, that's.
But that's not our, that's to bring up, yours to worry about. With that, I mean, ninety-nine years, hey, as we move forward, you need to think about, do you want an out clause? You, you gonna stay there for ninety-nine years, or you gonna, I, I, you looking into electric buses perhaps, and you gonna put the charging stations up at the new building that we are gonna get built? You don't wanna be there, how do you get out of it? You know, that, that's what I don't know, and we want you to think about how you wanna handle it.
I'd like us to, to get a list first.
Okay.
What all of these things are, and then go to the minutia of the issues, because right now, we're gonna get bogged down.
Good point.
The, the points of interest are.
I got the floor, electric separation, percentage of maintenance, what was next?
Okay, I listed as concrete, and, and I will put floor.
A possible.
We, access to toilet facilities.
That's, that's in the warrant?
Should never be an, should never be an issue, in fact, well, I'll, I'll check, that should be an issue.
It's in the warrant.
Yeah.
Insurance, meaning insurance to protect us and to protect you, should that portion of the building be.
Destroyed.
So.
And so that relieves you of that portion of the building, or you do, and not, trying to stay away from the minutia, insurance is one, so let's, we come back to it, but my vision would be, you insure the building, we, we reimburse you for our portion.
And you're gonna re, you're gonna ensure, obviously, what you already do, the buses.
Good answer, yeah, the nice thing about it, it's the same insurance company for both, so Primex is gonna cover us, it's covering you, but I don't know as if the town has it broken out by building, what our actual costs are, we have, like you, you don't have it broken down by building, you have your annual costs, so that is a tricky one to determine, Bert, I get your point, and I agree with it, there needs to be that percentage of equal coverage, it's gonna remain, but what that coverage is, that's gonna be a little bit tricky to figure out and work out, but I think we can get there.
But that we can do later, whether we, whether we insure this portion, and you insure this portion.
Percentage of insurance, got it.
How is it covered now?
Primex, so.
Well, who pays the bill?
Municipal insurance is, is covered.
So why don't we just keep it the way it is?
Because there's a percentage that they are now, again, because of the ninety-nine years for a dollar.
Yeah.
It's a, an, it's an above and beyond cost that would be affecting.
I don't see it, because it's something. We've been paying for since nineteen seventy-eight, when the buses were winning.
A yearly amount from the school to cover percentage of that, so what Bert is saying, that we need to, they need to contribute that percentage still.
I kinda like what it is.
So.
Next would be vehicle, vehicle drainage, you now have a separation tank, is that my understanding? Your trucks come in, they got salt on them, et cetera, they park, that, that runoff that comes off of those trucks goes into a separation tank, is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Okay, if, if it isn't, it should be, all right, so how do we treat that on our side? So, I'm gonna list that as item number six.
So, item number six, when you put in your concrete floor, I would suggest that you be putting in a, a capture, the ability to capture your.
Retention tank.
Retention tank, so, and again.
So, so we put, we put retention, okay, as to, when we get to go down the laundry list. All right, I'll, I'll put there for now, so your part, is there any that you wanna add to this list that we haven't already spoken?
One, I, I certainly appreciate Ed's perspective on it, that kinda puts us right back to where we once used to be, and it's a very simple methodology to kinda build from, you know, that, an amount of money determined would be, excuse me, man, that's with a water, but I'm good. Yeah, it's, that's simple, and then, you know, costs above and beyond that, you know, for the addition.
There you go, buddy.
Where does that?
You all the talking, please open your water.
Yeah, I appreciate that, so, yeah, I should think you'd be opening his order, he's chair of person. Good support of board member there, thank you.
That's right, my, my take here.
Going, I wanna, I want us to complete the list, so that we can then go down, and, and put the minutia into them, the detail into them.
Yep.
The issues, so what I'm looking for, is I'm looking for all of the issues, and now I'll, I'll raise maintenance as my item seven, meaning, are we forced to go to an outside entity, or do we go back where we were originally? But not to discuss it, just to list it, I'm looking for number eight.
So, maintenance, the issue there was, you weren't able to do maintenance because of the floor setup. Now that you've got a good quality floor setup, you should be able to do anything you need to do within those two bays.
Okay, let's leave it on here, without getting into the. Because.
Is that a fair statement, or no?
No, no, it's not, because you have a mechanic that does all of this, let's take brake adjustment as an example, all right? So, right now, we have to go to SG Read to have that done, even if we have a cement floor, we may not have a mechanic that is certified to do brakes. So, you've got a guy that does it, and so now, with us getting into the minutia here, which I don't wanna do until we get the list complete, is, okay, we got a truck, a bus that can't run, and your guy is, is sitting in there smoking a cigarette and, and playing on a commuter, you know, if it would be subject to the request, you've got a, it's a snowstorm, and you've got two trucks down, and we got a bus that's down, the bus waits, and your, your vehicles go first, you get a plow of snow and keep the roads open, it was, as it was done before, was done on a priority of the issue, as opposed, so the school didn't have override over the town, the town was gracious enough to bring us in on that bay, you have the lift and the mechanic, so that was.
I think we, we need to go back to having that back on the list and discuss that.
Let me, let me speak to the, the beautiful thing about me having a little bit of experience working for the town, and understands how that was set up with the school and the town, it was the same mechanic, okay? But that mechanic, his forty-hour-a-week job was working for the town, he was a subcontractor for the school, and he worked on the buses in off-hours, on weekends, and things of that sort, it was the same person, but it was done outside of his normal scope of work, so it was the same person, but he did not do work on buses during his forty-hour-a-week job, that was for the town, working for the town, so he was the same person, would be billing the school for his services, and we could bring Eddie. And we could bring Eddie Shank in here and he would tell you exactly that's how that used to work. It was the same mechanic, but he did that work differently. So, it's not like there's an ambulance and a bus that need maintenance and you can bring it in and quantify which one's gotta get preference over the maintenance. No. That's our mechanic. If you wanna have a mechanic that does work there, you've got your two bays to have him do work there. It wasn't the same mechanic. That's historically been the way it was.
Jim, I'm, I'm going to agree but disagree. Yes, Eddie worked for the town, but when a bus needed something that had to be done, it was prioritized and done.
What if you just simply said, if a bus comes in with an issue, he can just make note of the time, work on the bus, and for that period of time he's working on the bus, the school pays paycheck.
But he is a town employee. So that, that does compromise.
And our mechanic is our mechanic. Anyway, but wait a minute, it was charged back. Yes, it's your employee, but you, you got reimbursed by the school district. So, the question is, community here, the buses and the trucks are all community. The kids gotta be delivered, the snow's gotta be removed, we understand that. But that being understood, you got a hospital there, okay. We just got an ambulance that came in here with, someone's got their throat slit, we gotta get to it. And guess what? So, you, you go do it, so.
I don't think we could use.
So if we're, if we're gonna set these parameters in the lease for us to be community, then it needs to be community.
I get that.
In that sense, so.
Our mechanic can't get the town stuff done in his forty hours, adding school buses to it ain't gonna happen. But Hunter has a point.
I was, I was gonna make a similar point. Our current mechanic is fully committed. He has certifications to work on, on work that is specific to our equipment. There are certifications for school buses that I'm sure he does not have. There's equipment and materials, repair materials, supplies and things of that nature that would go along with the repair of school buses. There just is no time to accommodate that and I think you're creating an unfulfillable expectation that, that those things would happen at a time limit.
Moreover, plus or minus about three years ago, the town went from a maintenance mechanic and a half, almost two mechanics, down to one. So, we have had through budget cutbacks and refining of our, streamlining of services that we provide, our vehicles, we've pared that back to a point where our mechanic can keep up with, can really keep up with the maintenance, muscle preventative maintenance, so adding a fleet of buses isn't, isn't possible.
If we have delays now and police equipment, that's.
Do you think, Jim, it's, I'll let you put it out, you know, I worked for Clamont for thirteen years in doing the buses. And with Eddie, or working at the highway, the inspection station is free, the stickers are free two times a year to the, to the town, municipality, they don't have to pay for them. And so the mechanic is authorized because he's a state inspector, because just like I am, I'm still registered as a state inspector even though I'm not working at WMB. I did all the inspections and it saved a hundred and fifty, two hundred dollars a bus every time it went to Reed's, okay? You know, every time it goes over to Reed's, it's, it's a couple hundred dollars, you know, which is inspection station, if the guy is maintaining the buses or the, or the stuff can be done. But all of a sudden, that stopped. He took a couple of years ago, now, and that, that cost, that cost the school a lot of money because, you know, municipality doesn't have to pay for the inspection station.
So I think whatever the school gets for maintenance ought to have that certification. But that's just my suggestion.
Want a part-time job?
Have we come to a point where there's no more that we wanna add to this list?
No, no. Go ahead, John.
Is snow removal something we need to discuss?
I don't think so. I think that's.
When they plow the yard, plow the yard and be done with it, stop screwing around with stuff like that.
This brings us back to Ed's point, but.
Yeah.
Which I think bears more discussion, but.
No, I get, I wasn't gonna talk about the snow, but, you know. Certainly we aren't gonna pile it up in front of yours and your bays. We need to do it and I would agree, but if we went with Ed's concept, you know, we're trying to edge off some of the costs that we're now gonna, gonna have and you're gonna have a lot of costs. So, but my, my point is getting back to the list, do you guys, do you want an out clause considered in there for yourself?
Would you be, Harry, please?
Would you want an out clause that protects you? You may not wanna be there for ninety-nine years and, you know, we don't wanna get it to a point where it's like, well, I signed this thing for ninety-nine years. You may wanna get out and put electric buses up.
Part of that exit also includes the, you know, you would be abandoning what you put into it and not be looking for the town to reimburse for what you put into it, you know, things of that nature in the exit. Because one of the things that I wanna be very clear about is not, not locking us into something that, you know, is gonna require, you know.
If we wanted to change it, we'd have to go back to the town and, and go through the process. We've got enough to do.
Hunter has a.
Yeah, one, one other item you wanna consider discussing is the storage of school materials and vehicles outside of that bus base in the yard. I think that should be attended to one way or another.
On my list of things that, that we brought to the board at our last really working group like this was the fact that we had an offer of space outside. And we, we had that proposal of the ability, because quite frankly, the two bays aren't meeting your needs, won't meet your needs tomorrow, right? Aren't meeting them today. So you have a greater need than what's beyond these two bays. Obviously, the town has a greater need beyond these two bays. So, to Hunter's point about, you know, what's the future gonna look like? Because as it stands right now, you've got two bays, right? Obviously, the drivers are gonna go and park, but, you know, all of a sudden now we've got, and I don't know if you've pared down your buses yet, and I haven't been by there in a couple of days or weeks, but are there eight buses still outside? A number of buses that are outside versus the ones that are inside? You know, what spillage over of space are you gonna require, you know, for, beyond the two bays? Because as the warrant was written, it's the two bays, right? So, you know, we wanna be more than accommodating and, and be reasonable about, you know, obviously your bus drivers are gonna come and park where our employees park, you know? You're gonna have buses that are not gonna be always inside, you're gonna have some that are outside. What does that look like? What's that gonna be like? And what are the expectations from us? What are your expectations from you of us? You know, so to understand that a little bit better, I think is important. Thank you, Hunter, great point.
Right now, you're storing a lot of stuff in the extra buses.
Okay, I'm, I'm having a hard time with this discussion where we're going into the minutia. Can we agree that I've just added future needs and outside parking? Is there anything else we'd like to add to this list and then we can go down and talk about the minutia and get something done in this business meeting as opposed to wind up just talking and not getting anything done? So, is there anything else?
Did your last one include as well as possible space to put an office? Because we are gonna have to pull out that shanty that we have in there.
Yes.
So that would be.
You have the bays now and in that center, there is a space to accommodate a small office that would be needed and/or a maintenance shed for tools, et cetera. I think that can be done in the space between the actual two bays.
But if it can't. And we need to put like an office trailer or something so that they can execute. Would that go underneath the outside?
Outside, outside parking, parking and area.
Okay, so.
So if we can at least come to a conclusion that we've got the issues, so I'd ask again, are there more issues that we would add to this list?
Other than the minutia point of that, right now, I, I am at a loss to think of anything else, Barry.
No, I mean, I just, I wanna get this behind this and I think if you go down through the list, stick it up.
Is on a list of things that you think that what?
I'm not sure if it falls in the minutia or not. Typically, you know, these, often these things are looked at as sort of a condo arrangement and in a condo arrangement, there's often a fee for the common area, cam, cam fee, common area maintenance, the things such as water and sewer, the things that come and go into those spaces and you can consider that, you know, as a minutia issue if you'd like, probably ought to be some discussion about that going forward.
Only last thing I have is that obviously we're gonna be putting this down. I'd like to kinda circle back to Ed's comments about how best to achieve the financial aspects of, of, of this. So, of the things that are gonna be separated, obviously that is your expense and things of that sort, but the long-term, you know, structural needs and, you know, to accommodate the insurance, to accommodate the snow and, you know, the insurance and, you know, all those other little small things, how do we qualify that? So it's as easy on the town and as easy on the school to kinda have an understanding of where we are today and we could budget for this tomorrow, next year, and it's, it's repeatable, consistently repeatable, so you don't have peaks and valleys in your budget of up and down.
So, I mean, I, I mean, sometimes I'm way too practical. It's the same taxpayer paying the bill, whether we pay it on the school side or the town side is, so whether you're redoing a roof, make it simple, you, you go to the year to town meeting and get a vote to appropriate the funds for the roof, it's the same taxpayer whether we take ten percent or twenty percent out of our side of the budget. That complicates things because then you need two votes to appropriate a roof instead of one. So, it's the same taxpayer.
So how would you propose doing that?
We just set an amount that the school district contributes every year towards the maintenance in both long-term and short-term and the town deal with it on their side because they're the ones best able to do that.
Now we're back where we started. And I don't disagree with it and I'm, I'm laughing because we kind of are financially back where we started. And, you know, what does that dollar figure look like today? And obviously ninety-nine years is, is what is that gonna look like? You know, a, a dollar today was not a dollar ninety-nine years ago, right? So, how that dollar stretches is gonna be different today than tomorrow. So whereas that we just put a new roof on that structure within the last five or six years, obviously it's gonna be a stretch before another one is needed, but, you know, the other structural issues to that building, you know, hard for us to predict where that's gonna be a hundred years from now. So I, I like your point, Ed, but I just don't know how, super practical. And budgeting, yeah, makes it easy because you can plan for it, it's repeatable, but if there's an escalator in there of, you know, whatever the percentages would be, something that is recognizable and identifiable and repeatable for me.
My, I disagree. We, we will have a line in our budget for the bus garage and that is the line that we would allocate for our expenses that come from the requirements of the lease. To, to look at it as a, a, an entity that would, would require a bond or something else. If the entire building burns down, then that becomes a totally different situation.
Well, I don't disagree with that, Bert.
I don't see any expense here, Jim, that needs us to get into a savings account to overcome that expense.
Yeah. Just, it's hard for me to rub my crystal ball and it is for Ed to, I, I get your point. And these things and the separation of the two and, you know, the, the double, it's, that's a challenge and an unnecessary burden that I think we're putting back on the residents that don't need to be.
We've got everything on the list that we think are issues. Is this a time that we begin to go down them or do we want time between to think about what each side would want? Or do we do it right now?
Well, we're gonna take this list and, and start trying to build a lease around it and then.
Finish up.
Yeah.
But, you know, put, put the dotted i's and carse the t's on the lease. We already got a lease, which is better than we had before when we had a lease, so.
What I mean by lease, I mean the written lease.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, right.
But many of these things have to be, you guys have gotta decide, you know, how you wanna, how you wanna deal with that. I think you've got some guidance from your business administrator, you may wanna take that, you've got some guidance from Bert, you may wanna take that. But that's up to you.
The simplest.
And I don't want, you know, at this point, I want you to really realize, you've got those bays, start doing what you wanna do with it, but, you know, we need to, we need to truly clarify a lease so that, you know, I won't be around but in fifty years where people know what's going on, what happened. That's my thought.
Can you review the list that you've made, Bert? Just so that, because I, I don't know if I missed something, get to the beginning.
You've got them also written down, Jim?
Yeah.
Okay, let's make sure that we're on the same page.
The floor, which includes the catch basin for.
Okay, now, let's get to the list, not to, with the floor.
Well, that is part of the floor. How do you put the floor in without having that?
Yes, I, I got all of that, but we, but we, we get to that, Jim.
Okay.
You all read the list, thank you.
Floor, the electric separation, percentage of maintenance, use of facilities, bathroom, et cetera, percentage of insurance and defined outdoor space. That's what's on my list.
You had more, thank you.
Yes.
Separation tank.
Which I had on the floor.
Retention tank. Maintenance. You mentioned a get-out clause.
Out clause, yep. It gets up to you guys to do it on the list, no?
And without getting into it, we're, we're just reviewing the list for Keith. Continue, Jim. Okay, so, a get-out clause. Outside parking or outside access. And my ten was future needs. Insurance. So, can the two boards agree that the, the list is as complete as we can make it now?
Three, yeah.
What were eight, nine and ten, Bert? Just.
Eight, nine, eight was the get-out clause.
Yeah, okay, got that.
Nine was outside parking, working. Outside access. And ten was future.
Future. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
So now, time allowing, do we want to start down this list or do we wanna go away and think about this list and come back another day? I'm, I'm all for going now into discussion of each one of these, trying to make it succinct as possible because we have a two-hour limit. And pick, leave it to you, the select persons, to pick out of the ten, the one most important that you want to see formalized and we work that way in a priority backwards.
I wanna see everything, no one higher on that list than the other, right? They're all in some way, shape or form need to be at least identified and pointed out, but at the same time, I don't wanna be pigeonholing us into this is the only list that we can ever, ever talk about and it can't, no, we need to be, the ability to come back to this.
That takes a simple sentence at the end, this can be amended with a joint.
Exactly, so.
So that's.
I think if, plus there's minutia points you wanna get into here, I think we've got a pretty clear start of where we need to write, what we need to write. And let's write it, come back and then we can, unless you think there's minutia details in here, but.
I, I think, I think we need to see a draft of it because there are things that you all need to figure out, such as the proportionality of the building that we will use and the insurance. I think we can agree that we can start making adjustments and then when we see a draft, you know, then maybe we can come back and hammer out some of those details, but all we're gonna be doing now is speculating and worst-case narrowing, car fire, fiery car crash, and I don't wanna do that all morning. car crash, and I don't wanna do that all morning. So that's just my opinion.
I've added a number one for clause for...
Changes or...
Whatever.
Yeah.
Sorry. I'm sorry, Bert. I'm sorry, I told them, Bert. You know, there are certain things that, we have a lease, certain things you guys need to start getting done. You can't wait till school starts and pour a concrete floor, I don't think. I think you wanna get that done as soon as possible. I think you wanna separate the electric as soon as possible. So to me, we have a lease, and as a leaseor or leasee, then we can agree that you start on those things. Those would be the priorities that I, if I was sitting in your position, I would wanna have codified. We don't have to have that. At this point, I don't think, anything wrong, have that as part of the, it will be part of the lease, but get it done, you know? I think as a leaseor, we can say, go ahead, get it done, and then we can work on some of these other things after that, I think, but that's just my opinion at this point.
One thing I wanna build off of Barry's comment is... Yep, you gotta get those things moving, at least in a, in a contract or schedule, right? Which we know is challenging these days. The only thing that, that we would be requiring is obviously the proper design and permitting and inspection process of these things, so that the leaseor can have some assurance that they're being done correctly into code and correctly as they may be. Even though we know that we are exempt from our own permitting, we need to do that in cases like this.
Barry, to put the concrete floor first, there's no money to put the concrete floor first. We have, we have a budgetary process where our money is allocated, and we may find funds that we could...
Can you move? I mean, you're not hamstrung here. If you need to get it done...
There's, because it's end of the budget year, we didn't have the full accoutrement of bus drivers, so we have, so we have funds available in the bus account, so...
So you could use that.
Yes, we have funds that we can start.
I thought you might be able to do something like that. I mean, don't forget, I was budgeting here for a number of years.
But money's...
But it hasn't been approved by the board, but to... To reallocate it for...
But it could be done.
Yes, it could be done tonight's meeting, actually, if...
If we've taken school, I'm talking school, we've taken money from the public for all of these different things, that haven't, this isn't one of them, then I have to be very careful with my vote as to spending money that, I said to you, okay, we wanna do XYZ. We did XYZ, and we got $100,000 left over. Now we wanna take that, put it into something that you haven't voted on.
I guess what, I don't mean to interrupt you, Bert, but I guess what I would say is, if you find the money to get it done, do it, okay? You don't have to, I think as leaseors, we're saying, get your work done. And so the budget aspect is up to you guys. If you don't, you know, if you, if it comes September and you still got two holes in the ground, you still got two holes in the ground, okay? Which is what you don't want.
Well, I think if you're gonna write up a lease that says, we have the ability to pour a concrete floor, you can pour that concrete floor 10 years from now, and it's still okay to do it. So as far, the concrete floor doesn't have to be done right away.
Yes, it does.
The issue was expediting, maybe that particular issue, is the way I took it.
Yeah, that's how I feel.
And I would rather see the lease so that we knew the contents of the lease, as opposed to a particular article.
But that's up to you guys, how you wanna handle that particular part of it. You know, if you wanna vote on it tonight, it's a logic that could get very interesting, but...
Well, I don't know.
That's up to you guys.
I don't know what a concrete floor is gonna cost, but as a taxpayer, I see my taxes getting tapped. So if you guys have the money now to do it, then do it, but if you don't, then you're not gonna be able to do it.
But if you don't have the authority for that expenditure, Keith? The whole thing is, when we give a budget, it's listed out by items that we are going to put money into, and here comes one that is not an item that we asked permission for yet. So in our next budget, a year from now, we might put in $40,000, $45,000 for a cement floor and drainage accommodation, okay? And so for us to take that money out now that we got for something else is something I not easily will vote for.
If you don't take the money out now, it's just gonna get turned back into the general fund. Am I correct?
No.
Who said no? Oh, gee, John, go ahead.
Barry, we rely on the consent, consent of the people, and we show them line items in a budget that they vote on, and now we want to, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna squeeze out of this to do this? No.
Could I ask Ed?
No.
What he thinks of the process?
This is kind of the minutia of more of the school board, because Mr. Spalding's opinion... It doesn't mean it's the other four members' opinion.
I'll just jump in and kind of get us back on point.
Is, that's their part. We have our working orders at this point. We know what we need to do on our side. How they accomplish the needs on, after that is done, that's back on them. So I, we know we need to start drafting up.
That's what I'm saying, that's what's gonna be in the draft.
And how that gets accomplished is...
Is irrelevant.
Is not this board's, right? We are charged with the potential affairs of the town, they are charged with potential affairs of the school.
I agree.
And that's the separation.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, so...
Okay, so we'll say the same thing, let's move on.
Yeah, I'm just a taxpayer, and I'm not, you know, but...
Oh, that's pretty important, being taxpayers.
I would just like to put in that, a contract between the school and the town that says, okay, you've got those two bays, you got all the repairs that's needed inside, you are responsible for, and authorized through the town, through the town building inspector or whatever. The roof as a thing is a special to be paid, insurance, but everything is supposed to be done to that building, is there with the parking space outside. I mean...
That's on our list.
Yeah, it'll all be one simple thing, you don't have to just, what, you know...
Unfortunately, you do. Unfortunately. So it does have to get spelled out to some level of...
But mainly, the school is, school is responsible for everything that's going on inside that building to be repaired, by the cement floor, the insulation furnace, you know, all the electricity stuff, to be taken care of. It seems like a simple contract to, to put out that way, and parking space for the drivers and, and the spare buses outside, you know?
Please, why don't you write that down, Wayne, we got a lease.
That's kind of what we're talking about.
Is there anything else that we need to know as we pick off? Time is getting paid for me, anyway.
Wayne brought up a good point, I don't think we actually talked about heat and insulation, that goes under the concrete floor and stuff.
Yeah, it goes under the responsibility of the school inside.
Right, I just wanna make sure that...
There's nothing there currently.
Right, well, yeah.
Anything you gotta do in there is gonna be a...
But we didn't mention it specifically as one of our 10, but I think we wanna provide some heat or insulation.
Yeah, if you have in your lease that says you can do the improvement...
You know, you're not gonna do it today.
Right, right.
It might take you two, three, four, five years.
I was just making sure that...
The ability to do those things as will be required in the future, that we cannot sit here and rub our ball and figure out, will be able to be done. I mean...
We don't have to figure that out.
We don't have to, right?
It's the lease that gives them the option. That's it.
Like I said, my crystal ball can't be rubbed to figure that out, and give them the ability to do those things in a few days.
This is his crystal ball.
I'm adding on 12, heat and insulation.
Good, thank you. Good. All right, so you feel like you know you've got a direction to begin to move it? And I think we know...
We have a direction that we need to move.
Can I just add one?
You better go through you.
Can I just add a question? I know that I can't infringe on anybody's First Amendment, right? However, I would really like for us to start to move forward now and forget the past, and I, 'cause I know we decided that the other day, but then there was more stuff brought up and on yesterday. I would like to just, from today moving forward, can we just not talk about the past anymore and just start moving forward with the bus block?
Only what?
Only what?
Only what's on that today is you. No one's talked about the past at all today.
No, that's what I, no, that's what I mean, from now...
So there's no need to.
So can we leave this room, right? 'Cause I know we...
I thought we came into this from that way.
We're moving forward.
We're moving, that's all I wanna know, is we're just moving forward. I know we've said that before.
You guys, we can make some decisions, we need to make decisions, and I don't think they're gonna be contrary decisions, okay? We're gonna work together, we're gonna get this done.
We just need to outline the lease.
And I don't like what you contributed, so thank you with that process, and that's how I feel.
I can, I can, I can agree with Ghana to a point, but history is important, they teach it in school, I think, and history is always important, so I will not forget it, and I will not be restricted from saying it when somebody is violating something historically. So I will not put the muzzle on for history. It's there, we can go forward amicably to get this done. Now, I would like to see, I would like to see a framed lease from the town. I think that is reasonable, based on the 12 items that we've talked here, and we, the school board, also would frame these issues with ours and put those two together at another meeting and formulate a document.
So understanding this, and I, I fully anticipate this and expect this, that we're gonna present to you a draft, and I've stressed the word "draft" document, that will obviously require more discussion to get everyone's needs met, right? So to understand that, that this is, we're gonna...
You got a bus, you got two bays. It's a miracle you're able to get four buses in there with that process, so do it, you got it. If you have to go to, if they have to go to the bathroom, we'll make sure they go, have access to the bathroom. This case, I think it was the middle door that was locked, it was not the bathroom door, and might have been inadvertently, I would hope, I hope nobody locked it on purpose, but I don't think that, I hope that didn't happen, and I don't think it did. But nonetheless, you got it.
I'm going to add one thing to that, Barry, which I think is...
Here we go, we're talking about the past.
History comes in useful. When the, when you wrote a letter to Mr. Menahan saying that the urinals didn't work, and this didn't work, so on and so forth, in renting, when you are a rentor, and the person who, who has that building doesn't have the sanitary facilities working, you can move out into a motel, he pays for the motel, he pays for your meals, and all the inconvenience to you. So I guess I would say the excuse that was given in that letter to the superintendent of schools here in Newport was out of line.
He's no longer here. Yes, but the bathrooms that...
That were there needed a plumber, Barry.
If your point is, and I think this is what it is, that you wanna make sure bathrooms are working, that's our responsibility.
We have our own employees look after it. Stephen, I turn it over to you, I think we're, from the town's perspective, we're set.
Thank you.
Do we need to just have a, an expected date of when that draft will be? I know it's a tough time of year.
As I said in the beginning, it's at the working pace of...
That's fine.
So whatever their prudential expedient, however that can be done, I'm not about to predict a subcontract, it's timeframe.
Is this something that's gonna go through Hunter and myself to each board? So Hunter will send me the contract, and I will send it...
We'll get it, we'll share it with you. Soon as we get it.
Should it go to your chairperson? Even though I don't want a lot of stuff coming to me.
Once we get it, I'm sure it'll be shared with this board, through Hunter, and likewise to you, through your board, to your board. That's our normal procedure for the town, I'm sure it is for you also, so once we receive...
As the chair, I want this moved through. I'm not gonna, you know, I'm not gonna be a bulldozer, but I want it done. And as the chair, I can move things along. If I can't, my vice chair carries a gun, so...
I think that's what Jim was saying, is that we can't really set a date.
It's not a time of date.
No, I don't wanna do that, other than our direction's going to be as soon as they can get it done. This is not a, hey, when you get around to it kind of a thing, this is, let's get this moving forward with some level of expediency, so that we can continue to move this bus forward.
So we'll each draw up drafts?
Good, that was good, Jim.
And then set a date that we can meet on it?
What's that?
We'll, we'll each draw up our own drafts and then set up a date to meet.
Now, we're the leaseor, we're gonna write it, send it out, we'll have another meeting to discuss.
Unless, once it's written, then we'll set the date for a meeting.
Yeah, okay.
That sounds good to me. Any other comments?
So are we in agreement of the 12 items?
Yeah.
First of all?
Yes.
A good lesson, Jim, did you take all of it?
Did you add the heat, et cetera?
Yeah.
The last two? So the 12 items, we all leave here with a consensus?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, done.
Excellent. I think that should conclude today's meeting.
Good.
You gentlemen, I appreciate it.
Thank you all for coming.
This is where we should have been many, many months ago. We're here now, it's all that matters. Thank you very much for having us.
Can I just end with one thing?
Yes, sir.
It's been brought to my attention that there's one person on your board that really took my statement back when we were talking, this is history, talking about the first initial thing, and I was sitting in a chair in Florida, and I said, "Well, Barry," and I think Janet took that. So personally, and I apologize to that, you know how I feel about you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you to the citizens.